You are live.
Good morning, everyone.
Morning.
Morning.
I will now call the July quarterly meeting of the Board of Trustees of Illinois State University to order. I note for the record that this meeting is being held pursuant to Governor Pritzker's executive order 2020-40 and Public Act 101-0640. As Chair of the Board, I determined that an in-person meeting would not be prudent or practical at this time, and as a result, this meeting is being held as a virtual meeting. As included in the notice of the meeting, the university has invited a YouTube link that allows all interested persons to contemporaneously view the meeting and hear all discussion and roll call votes. Accommodations have been made for presenters and persons wishing to make public comment to participate in the meeting via Zoom. Trustee Lauterback, would you call the roll?
Yes, trustee Bone?
Present.
Trustee Dobbsky?
Present.
Trustee Donahue?
Present.
Trustee Jones?
Present.
Trustee Lauterback, present. Trustee Navarro?
Present.
Trustee Rossmark?
Here.
Soon-to-be trustee Turner?
Here.
Chairperson, we have a forum.
Thank you, trustee Lauterback. I ask that each trustee confirm that they can hear me, the other trustees, and all discussions. Trustee Bone?
Yes, I can hear you.
Trustee Dobbsky?
Yes.
Trustee Donahue?
Yes.
Trustee Lauterback?
Yes.
Trustee Navarro?
Yes.
Trustee Rossmark?
Yes.
Soon-to-be trustee Turner?
Yes.
Okay. Any other trustee or any discussion, please let us know immediately. Also, pursuant to the requirements of the Open Meetings Act, all votes taken at today's meeting will be roll call votes. Each board member's vote on each issue will be identified and recorded. Next on the agenda, we are going to have the oath of office for our new trustee, so we can stop referring to her as soon-to-be trustee. We welcome a new member to the Board of Trustees. Jada Turner is our new student trustee, who was elected to the position by the student body and serves a one-year term. Jada is a senior business and family consumer science major originally from Peoria, Illinois. She served as the student body vice president the past year and has been involved in many different ways on campus through the Dean of Students' Office, University College, the Division of Student Affairs, and as a member of several registered student organizations. Jada is set to graduate in May 2021 and plans to pursue a master's degree in digital marketing. Trustee Turner, please raise your right hand to take the oath of office. Please repeat after me. I do solemnly swear
I do solemnly swear
that I will uphold the Constitution of the United States
that I will uphold the Constitution of the United States
and of the state of Illinois
and of the state of Illinois
and that I will faithfully discharge the duties
and I will faithfully discharge the duties
of the office of the Board of Trustees
of the office of Board of Trustees
of Illinois State University
of Illinois State University
to the best of my ability
to the best of my ability.
Congratulations. We are happy to have you serve with us on the Board of Trustees, and we look forward to working together to benefit Illinois State University during the coming year. Would any of you like to say a few words?
Well, just congratulations, Jada, on that. Looking forward to meeting in that once we get through some of this other virus stuff here. So, but no, congratulations.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Welcome, welcome, welcome. We love having the trustee, the student trustees around. It helps keep us all young. At least in our minds.
I just want to say thank you, and I'm excited to work with everyone. And I know this is going to be an unusual time, but I'm ready to get to work and to do great things for the campus.
Great.
Thank you, Jada.
Welcome aboard.
You have before you the agenda for today's meeting. Can I have a motion and a second to approve the agenda?
Lauterback, move.
I'll second, trustee Bone.
Okay, we have a motion by trustee Lauterback and a second by trustee Bone. All those, oh, I'm sorry, we got to do our yays and nays. Thank you, trustees. Please answer with a yea or a nay after your name is called. Trustee Lauterback, please proceed with calling the roll for the vote.
Trustee Bone?
Yay.
Trustee Dobbsky?
Yay.
Trustee Donahue?
Yes.
Trustee Jones?
Yay.
Trustee Lauterback, yes. Trustee Navarro?
Yay.
Trustee Rossmark?
He's on mute.
Trustee Rossmark?
Thank you.
Trustee Turner?
Yes.
The ayes have it, the agenda is approved.
Thank you, trustee Lauterback, Madam Secretary. Approval of the meeting minutes. You have before you the minutes of April 25, 2020, special meeting of the Board of Trustees and the May 8, 2020 quarterly meeting of the Board. Can I have a motion and a second first to approve the minutes of the April 25, 2020 special meeting?
I so move.
We have a motion by trustee Navarro, the second.
I'll second.
Second by trustee Dobbsky. Again, we have a motion on the floor by trustee Navarro and a second by trustee Dobbsky. Madam Secretary, can you please call the roll for the vote?
Trustee Bone?
Yay.
Trustee Dobbsky?
Yes.
Trustee Donahue?
Yes.
Trustee Jones?
Yes.
Trustee Lauterback, yes. Trustee Navarro?
Yes.
Trustee Rossmark?
Yes.
Trustee Turner?
Yes.
The minutes of the April 25, 2020 meeting are approved.
Thank you, Madam Secretary. Can I have a motion and a second to approve the minutes of the May 8, 2020 quarterly Board meeting?
I so move.
Motion by trustee Navarro, can I have a second?
Second, trustee Bone.
By trustee Bone. Okay, we have a motion on the floor by trustee Navarro and a second by trustee Bone. Madam Secretary, can you please proceed the roll call for the vote?
Trustee Bone?
Yes.
Trustee Dobbsky?
Yes.
Trustee Donahue?
Yes.
Trustee Jones?
Yes.
Trustee Lauterback, yes. Trustee Navarro?
Yes.
Trustee Rossmark?
Yes.
Trustee Turner?
Yes.
The minutes of the May 8, 2020 quarterly Board meeting are approved.
Thank you, Madam Secretary.
You're welcome.
Next on the agenda is public comments. We have several persons who have indicated an interest in making public comments to the Board today. In accordance with the policy, the Board of Trustees will allow up to 30 minutes in total for public comments and questions during the public meeting. Typically, an individual speaker is permitted five minutes for his or her presentation. And if more than two persons speak on a single item, we recommend that one or more persons speak for them. However, today, we have 11 people who have expressed an interest to speak for the Board before the Board this morning. So, we are going to ask everyone to be patient, and please ask that people who are speaking, if you could limit your comments to three minutes today in an effort to allow all the parties who want to present to the Board to present today. That will take us a little bit over our 30 minutes, but we want to be mindful and respectful of everyone's time this morning, and we have numerous items on the agenda this morning. So, again, we do appreciate everyone taking time out to speak to the Board of Trustees this morning, but because we have so many people who are presenting today, we will not be able to allow the traditional five minutes because we do want to allow all of the people who have asked to speak to speak to us this morning. The Board of Trustees will accept copies of the speakers' presentations, questions, and other relevant written materials. If you have any written materials that you want to share with the trustees, you may send them to bot@ilstu.edu. Again, that's bot@ilstu.edu. When appropriate, the Board of Trustees will provide a response to a speaker's questions within a reasonable amount of time. We are going to have a timekeeper. Our Board Council is going to assist us with that, and we please ask that you are respectful of all other speakers. And so, when we call time, we would appreciate it if you can wind up and let us move on to our next speaker this morning. So, thank you. At this time, I invite Fusun Akman to unmute and proceed with your comments to the Board.
Good morning, can you hear me?
We can.
Thank you. Good morning, trustees, President Deets and Cabinet members. I'm Fusun Akman, a professor in the math department. Today, I'll talk about two institutional crises which will like the burden I assume with massive liability, tarnished reputation, and low morale. The first crisis I want to address briefly today is the derisive treatment of the ISU faculty. We have recently been vilified whenever we try to raise our concerns about the fall opening of the campus. The president has minimized the lack of faculty and committees on health and safety this summer by saying, "I'm still a faculty member myself." There are links to these quotes. "He has minimized the fears of faculty who wanted the option of teaching online if they did not feel safe," I quote. "There are groups of faculty who feel passionately about teaching in person and faculty who are equally passionate that safety requires online courses." "There is only one kind of faculty at ISU, the dedicated and caring kind, who wish they could teach in person." "It's just that most of us understand that we need to make it safe for those who don't have a choice but be on campus just for one semester." "Dr. Deets did not deign to give a formal answer to the very deliberate and respectfully written open letter on our concerns that has more than 500 community signatures, another sign that we are invisible and dispensable." "Since I don't have five minutes, I will just bring to your attention the email that was written by the Chair of the Academic Senate, Dr. Susan Coulter, yesterday to the faculty. We tenure-track faculty have no union, no voice at the table of the trustees, and apparently no rights to free speech and assembly. I'm respectfully asking the Board to be aware of the low morale and perceived oppression of the faculty at ISU and weigh the impacts of any consequential decisions on this study in general." "The second and more urgent crisis is the continued absence of meaningful health and safety measures to protect students, faculty, staff, and the wider community from COVID-19. A hasty decision to open campus to all students was made by the administration alone and was communicated to students and their families on April 29. The faculty and staff were then informed on April 30 with the words, 'You may also have seen in my communications to students and their families that ISU fully intends to welcome students back to campus.' No, we had not. As a result of this secrecy and knee-jerk reaction, students with July 1 leases with off-campus housing are now showing up in Normal Bloomington, not having heard any cautionary statements from ISU or watched any training videos by ISU or signed any ISU pledges. They have not been tested by ISU for the virus. Yet, they have been freely mingling. Statistically speaking, many are infected. Testing is only strongly recommended for students." Okay. While I have now a better understanding of the state of preparedness that we are in thanks to a talk with Dr. Tarfula yesterday, the danger of lawsuits from deceived students and parents remains. We'll undoubtedly have to go fully online within a few weeks of in-person teaching, and we'll have to answer for lost health, lives, and tuition and rent monies. I would ask the trustees to consider the human and not just the actuarial cost of these unilateral decisions. Thank you for listening.
Oh, thank you, Professor Akman. Next, we have Benjamin Saad.
Hello. First, I'd like to thank the Board of Trustees for granting the possibility to comment in today's meeting. So, I'm Ben Saad. I'm an associate professor of infectious disease ecology in the School of Biological Sciences. I'm also speaking on behalf of my colleague and collaborator, distinguished professor Scott Sakaluk. Dr. Sakaluk apologizes for his absence, but he is in the field performing federally funded research at this time. We are currently experiencing very challenging times, as we've just heard, where decisions are hard, yet strong and thoughtful leadership are paramount. We believe that here at ISU, through President Deets and his team, we have this strong and thoughtful leadership. We've been disappointed recently by a movement of negativity that appears to do little more than destabilize the careful planning process. Managing responses to the pandemic of SARS-CoV-2 is complex and ever-changing. Complete answers aren't always available readily, immediately, and those that believe that they should be are naive. We've been both impressed by the responses of the state of Illinois and ISU, first taking appropriate actions to close after spring break and subsequently planning going forward, driven by data and recommendations. We are very concerned about the health and safety of our campus community and the wider community of Bloomington Normal, in which we live, and that should remain a top priority. I'm confident that through the trends of infection and the situation in our state and the community, the university will respond appropriately. We could simply lock ourselves away now, come out when this is all over. However, this is unlikely to be the best option for, in the long run, and for our students who would suffer. Many of our students, both undergraduate and graduate, yearn for continuing experiences that can't be achieved online. For example, in biology, we've heard from several students who are excited to return to the lab bench even with appropriate safety restrictions in place. We're impressed by the clear and flexible planning of President Deets and his team. It is easy to let negativity pervade at this time, but we're confident in the approach to hope for the best but plan for the worst. This is a sign of good leadership, where we go forward with flexibility. We're confident that the full plan of mixed online, hybrid, and in-person maximizes experience for our students, offering diverse opportunities for our faculty, while also being conscious of the health and safety of our community. We're grateful for President Deets, his team, and the hundreds of staff who have worked incredibly hard to create a logical and adaptable campus plan. Dissemination of all details can't be achieved during the planning process, but we have found communication to be overall
fine.
apparent. So, finally, just to summarize, we're confident in the leadership of President Deets during these challenging times and trust that he'll modify any plans appropriately with the health and safety of the campus and Bloomington Normal community a priority. Finally, thank you to the Board of Trustees for the opportunity to speak today, and I wish you all good health.
Thank you, Professor Saad. Next, we have Stacy Otto.
Good morning, Chairperson Jones and trustees. I'm Stacy Otto, professor in educational administration and foundations. As trustees, your fiscal charge, your charge is fiscal oversight, and that helps ISU achieve its full potential. I want first to address the notion that ISU will collapse financially if students are not living on campus or taught in classrooms. If we move to remote instruction and invite only those who must be on campus to house on campus, might things be financially tight in the next academic year? Unquestionably. Excuse me. But ISU's position has recently been evaluated by NYU's Stern School of Business professor, Scott Galloway, who, with his colleagues, used their algorithm to reveal ISU emerges post-pandemic positioned in the coveted thrive category, while many other US institutions merely survive, suffer, or perish altogether. But Galloway cautions institutions thrive only if they deliver fall instruction remotely, and few are on campus. This pandemic rages uncontrolled nationwide, and so far, ISU has invited 20,000 students back, while failing to design and enact measures systematically and frequently to test, trace, and isolate, require and enforce masking, and meet or exceed guidelines for social distancing. The current Redbirds Return drafted and released without faculty input is utterly insufficient to mitigate risk and to keep our community safe from contagion, even though it repeatedly states, as to administrative communications to faculty, staff, and students, that health and safety are its number-one priority. Galloway calls this consensual hallucination. If we're so very proud of what's laid out in Redbirds Return and guarantee bringing students to campus will not cause community disease spread and death, then why did President Deets and his colleagues at Illinois System Institutions just ask the federal government for liability protection? Faculty, including NTTs and graduate TAs, are hard at work fulfilling our mission and charge, curriculum programs, and pedagogy under difficult and constantly changing circumstances. While we work, we remain focused first on health and safety as well as on providing the most engaging remotely-delivered instructional experience possible. But ISU's lack of scientifically-driven planning and implementation of basic health and safety measures, antagonistic treatment of concern by the former provost, in particular, and the president, and the lack of acknowledgement or response to the Concerned Faculty Group's letter or the English faculty's letter of concern drives a wedge between faculty and upper administration that feeds significant distrust bordering on hostile workplace conditions. We now find ourselves in a crisis of institutional confidence based on upper administration's lack of response, telling parents one thing and faculty another, and infringement on curriculum instruction, which is the faculty's purview. And I'm going to skip ahead. This, all of these will be in what I submit. I teach about social justice, equity, and inclusion, and I'm also a qualitative researcher. So, part of what I understand is what changes hearts and minds or personal stories. Something not immediately apparent is I have a genetic abnormality that makes me particularly susceptible to this virus. Most people don't know they have this mutation until their 30s or 40s. Some of our 20-something students unknowingly have this and other comorbidities. Redbirds Return therefore sends people who don't know they have comorbidities onto campus and into classrooms. And I believe the resulting tragedy and its economic fallout will rest squarely on ISU as an institution. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Professor Otto. Next, we have Cass Fleischer. I do not see Cass, so we're going to move on. And if, oh, there you are. Thank you, Cass.
Sorry about that.
No worries, thank you.
Technologies, I thank you. I am Cass Fleischer, professor of English. Unlike students and parents, the faculty were non-informed before April 30 about the administration's policies around fall 2020 instructional modalities and have not been afforded a collective voice since. We just lost Congressman John Lewis, who said, "When you see something that is not right, not fair, not just, you have to speak up. You have to say something. You have to do something." On May 25, 2020, George Floyd became the umpteenth person of color to utter the words, "I can't breathe," and the world exhaled. Quickly, the mission statement of ISU talks about a diverse community of scholars promoting public service for the citizens of Illinois and beyond. We are faced today with twin responsibilities, fiscal and moral, and they need not be understood as an either-or. If we take a long view, they may be understood as both and. And I'm going to summarize. Both among the students, among the faculty, and in the population of Bloomington Normal, we have upwards of 25% people of color. According to the 2010 census, you know, we have 10% African-American folks in Bloomington Normal, 6% Latinx, 7% Asian indigenous populations comprised 0.3%. The effect of SARS-CoV-19 on McLean County as of this writing, 21% of positive cases have been suffered by our Black community, double the population in town. 14% have been members of the Latinx community, again, double the population of Bloomington Normal. We are experiencing a huge spike in cases attributed by the Health Department to travel and parties. The vast majority of cases in young adult populations, of course. To this cauldron, the administration wishes to add a statewide migration event, inviting 20,000 young adults to reside in town. Many historically Black colleges and universities are moving to remote learning for a reason. And I do want to be clear, nobody wants to work in remote learning. It's not a preference. My own workload has doubled. These are the sacrifices we're making for local and global communities. Even as we encourage the administration to make science and database decisions, we have both a fiscal and moral responsibility to encourage the administration to make diversity-based policy, reflecting also President Deets's commitment to civic engagement with full responsibility to vulnerable communities. This is our summer of fiscal and moral accountability. This summer, a record 69% of US citizens agree that people of color are treated differently from white citizens. This is our summer of fiscal and moral accountability. This summer, unlike John Lewis and George Floyd, we still have breath to speak the realities of ignoring injustice. This is our summer of fiscal and moral accountability. If we do not fulfill our commitment to
fine.
these now, it will be clear that we will not fulfill our commitment to diversity in less pressing times. We will not have the trust of our communities, nor will we deserve it. This is our summer as leaders to say something and do something for the future of diverse communities, promoting public service as we promised. Thank you.
Thank you, Professor Fleischer. Next, we have Carrie Anna Cortet.
I see you're getting there. We're waiting for you to unmute.
Thank you.
Sorry, now I have to get back to my copy. Good morning, thank you. Sorry for the pause. My name is Dr. Carrie Anna Cortet. I am a professor in the Department of Special Education. I come to you with great concern for my colleagues, students, and the community members during this pandemic. The end of April, it was deemed, without any kind of consideration, for faculty, instructors, civil service, or our Bloomington Normal community that Illinois State University would reopen. I reject the notion that we would be open as we had never closed. We were always open. We were working, we were teaching, we were learning, we were studying, and we were just doing it differently. While we continued our business at the university in a different manner, we were also engaged in a plethora of town halls led by several administrators. Administration at one point told us that there were 17 different committees who were working on these issues of, quote, reopening because parents really want their freshman students to have a college experience, and we are determined to give it to them. This was an actual quote that was said to us in a town hall I participated in. When faculty asked questions regarding safety of our community, the students, instructors, about face-to-face teaching during a pandemic, we often got incomplete answers, or worse yet, incorrect answers. What kind of college experience are you giving students if they are isolated, physically distancing, or worse yet, sick, or even dead? What is the threshold ISU is willing to tolerate? Most people I speak to informally on campus or off-campus agree that possibly after about four weeks of students returning to campus and engaging in typical collegiate interactions, the physical ISU campus will again need to be vacated. Not closed, vacated. This will be a repeat, and again, a sudden disruption similar to that of last March. Why would we start in the same manner when indeed the numbers are now worse than when our campus was originally vacated? What is the threshold that the administration is willing to tolerate? What will the future reputation of ISU be willing to withstand? What is the number of positive cases for COVID-19 the ISU administration and the trustees are okay with? Then I ask you, how many deaths are we okay with? Are we more okay with a professor's death over a student's death?
Fine.
Ask yourself, what is the threshold that you can live with day to day when this situation could have been preventable? Many of our ISU civil service employees have already been given permission to work from home until January. State Farm, the largest employer in our area, will be working from home until January 2021. Why does administration intend on putting students, community, and faculty at risk? Thank you very much.
Thank you, Professor Cortet. Lisa Zappora?
Good morning, can you hear me?
Good morning, yes, we can.
Limited university professor in the Department of Chemistry, College of Arts and Sciences. Since coming to ISU in 1997, I've taught thousands of students in the classroom through general chemistry, one of our largest incoming chemistry classes, and mentored close to 100 students in my research lab through various programs on campus. Excuse me. And many of these are underrepresented students through programs such as Alice-Anth and STEM Alliance. I wanted to let the Board know that I have been pleased with how President Deets has guided the university through some particularly challenging times, budget issues in the state, and most recently, the COVID-19 pandemic. During President Dietz's term, the university's economic stability has been maintained such that we have been able to hire faculty and staff to give some raises, acknowledge accomplishments of faculty, students, and staff. Faculty have been able to continue to take sabbaticals and initiate programs that encourage diversity and promote equal opportunities for all. I know this year has been especially challenging, but the students I taught last spring were pleased to be able to continue their learning, in my case, through synchronous coursework to finish out the semester. In my department, there's a great eagerness to get back in the laboratory for teaching and research. As you can imagine, online laboratory are no, provide nowhere near the same experiences as a face-to-face learning or being in the actual laboratory. I've been impressed that the administration has worked within the guidelines provided by the state and the CDC to devise a flexible plan that will allow students to take classes, faculty to teach, to conduct some research, and experience college. I know these are unprecedented times, and the experiences will not be the same as they were, say, last year or two years ago. But I think those experiences, even modified, are better than just sitting at home. So mainly, I wanted to just to let the board know that I appreciate all the work that President Dietz and his team have done to ensure a stable and safe work environment for everyone at the university. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Professor Zappora. Next, we have Allison Alcorn.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Chairperson Jones, Board of Trustees, thank you for the opportunity to speak briefly. I'm a professor of musicology in the School of Music. This fall marks the beginning of my eighth year at Illinois State University, so I'm a relative newcomer. I gave up tenure and full professor rank at another university when I accepted this position here. So it was not a move that I considered lightly. Turns out, it was also one of the best decisions I've ever made. You see, I have experienced opaque leadership where faculty voice was silenced. And I am grateful to be on the faculty at ISU, where I have felt supported professionally and personally, where I have had a voice in governance, and where I have daily witnessed administrators doing their very best to help us keep teaching and researching and learning. The old curse, "May you live in interesting times," has taken on new meaning for us in recent months as we all traverse not only the unknown, but an unknown that keeps shifting under our feet. I have seen the entire ISU community dive into this, administration as well as faculty, staff, and students, and I've never been more proud to be a Redbird. Sure, mistakes have been made. Of course, mistakes have been made. But we are teachers, are we not? And moves ahead, all the better because of what we learned through failure. As we worked together through spring, summer, and now toward fall, I have been listened to and supported by my school director, by my dean, and by upper administration. My preferences and concerns have been sought and respected. And when I changed my mind about it, that was okay too. None of us knows what is going to happen, and I have deeply appreciated an administration marked by flexibility, openness, and a determination to work together in the very best way we can. Thank you for listening to me today. Thank you for continuing to support our administrators in ways that make it possible for them to continue to support us, the faculty, staff, and students of Illinois State University.
Thank you, Professor Alcorn. Next, we have Jerry Beggs. Good morning, Jerry.
Good morning. Thank you for allowing me to speak this morning. My name is Jerry Beggs, and I'm a professor in the Marketing Department, starting my 19th year at ISU this fall. I also serve as the NCAA Faculty Athletics Representative for ISU, and I am the faculty rep on the Illinois State Foundation Board of Directors. In all three of those roles, I understand the impact of negative publicity on a university in terms of admissions, community support, donations, and other types of funding. That's why I was really concerned over the past month that the media started covering a letter criticizing the administration at ISU for failing to include faculty in the decision-making process and for putting our safety at risk. This has not been my experience. My department chair has been in constant contact, asking for our teaching preferences and any accommodations we needed. At the university level, I have received multiple emails asking for faculty to serve on working groups related to these issues. It was frustrating that the criticism was the only voice being heard. And to that end, I co-authored a letter with Tracy Minery, an associate professor in the School of Kinesiology and Recreation, expressing our trust in the administration at ISU. This letter has been signed by over 300 faculty, staff, students, alumni, and community members. I'd like to read a short excerpt from that letter. "The purpose of this letter is to express our support for our campus leaders as they navigate these impossible decisions, beginning with the rapid decision-making necessary during spring semester, and through the ongoing planning for the coming year. We believe that our campus leaders have approached these circumstances with, one, genuine concern for the safety of the members of the campus community; two, deliberate, intentional, data-driven decision-making processes; three, sincere desire to solicit, listen to, and act upon input from campus stakeholders; and four, clear focus to maintain the strength and viability of our institution in the long term." In short, we trust that campus leaders are doing the best they can in these unimaginable circumstances. During these times, there are no perfect or right solutions. We acknowledge the process has not always been smooth. We will not agree with all the decisions that have to be made, and we will offer critical feedback to contribute to the process. There are many legitimate, serious concerns being voiced that must be addressed to ensure safety and well-being of our students, faculty, staff, and community. However, we are confident that decisions will be made with input and intention. We appreciate the tireless efforts of all those who have been involved in the decision-making process during these times, from our campus leaders, to the working group members, to the stakeholders at all levels of the university. We recognize that the coming semesters will require exceptional degrees of collaboration, patience, trust, and empathy on all our parts as we continue to fulfill the mission and uphold the legacy of our institution. As our new provost reminded us in his introductory email, "Our accomplishments during the spring semester reveal that our capacity for creativity and resilience is limitless as long as we work together." The signatories of this letter commit to continue this collaborative work as a campus community with a spirit of trust, a mindset of flexibility, and a willingness to contribute to the solutions so we can rise as Redbirds to meet the challenges ahead. Finally, I personally have seen the tireless efforts of our leadership, including President Larry Dietz, Athletic Director Larry Lyons, the administrators in the provost's office, and many other faculty and staff across campus. They are working night and day to provide the best possible plan for the fall and to communicate that with us, all while dealing with rapidly evolving information. I have confidence that Illinois State began this crisis in a better situation than other schools in our state, thanks to our leadership, and we will weather the storm because of our leadership. Thank you.
Thank you, Professor Beggs. Next, we have Eric Boingjen. I'm sorry if I'm slaughtering this, Eric.
That's okay. I've heard many different versions of it. Good morning, and thank you for affording me this opportunity to be heard. My name is Eric Boingjen, and I am the Outreach Coordinator for Research and Graduate Studies. 2020 has presented many difficult situations, including the global pandemic that has caused much of the world to make impossible decisions. I believe that there is no right decision during these unprecedented times, but that we all must make the best decision that we can for those that we are responsible for. I believe that our administration has spent countless hours gathering evidence, seeking advice from relevant experts, and agonizing over making the best science-based decisions that they can. Our administration has been put in a no-win situation where they are going to be second-guessed by people that are not on one side of the situation or the other. But rather, they are going to be second-guessed by people that are all along a spectrum of opinions on the situation. Many of these are uninformed, ill-informed, or simply misinformed opinions. I know that there are facts that I am unaware of, and that there are variables that I can't begin to fathom. Therefore, I am glad that ISU has such strong, caring, and insightful leaders, leaders who are doing the best that can realistically be expected of them to intentionally seek input in order to make the difficult decisions that are best for all of the stakeholders, both on and off campus. Thank you for the opportunity to be heard this morning.
Thank you so much. We have next Jeff Helms.
Good morning. Thank you all for allowing me this opportunity to share my thoughts with you. I am a Redbird. I received both my undergraduate degree and my PhD from Illinois State University, and now find myself to be an AP employee here. So I feel like I have a strong dedication to Illinois State University. As each of you know, Illinois State has a long and proud history of transparency and shared governance. Is that always perfect? It is not. But we work very hard, and our president and our administration work very hard to ensure that we keep up that long and proud history. As an AP member, I feel that I needed this opportunity to share with the board my feelings regarding our fall opening and to speak for some of my students. And when I say that, I am an AP member who has a role in teaching microbiology for primarily our nursing students. I also am director of our largest non-majors biology course, Biology 101, and I serve as the pre-health professions advisor to over 200 students in the School of Biological Sciences who are wishing to go on to professional programs, pre-med, pre-dental, et cetera, post-graduation. Within the sciences and within many other fields, hands-on learning is the key to successfully incorporating knowledge into that learning. Future healthcare professionals need those hands-on experiences in the anatomy and physiology lab, in the microbiology lab, and many other biology labs to be able to build this foundation for their future. Chemistry, organic chemistry, general chemistry, I can't even imagine trying to do and learn and build that knowledge base in an online environment. The physics lab works exactly the same way, and all of those components, biology, chemistry, and physics, contribute to those pre-professional healthcare professions in their foundational knowledge. In these challenging times, we, every one of us, faculty, staff, administration, the local community, and our board, need to work together to ensure the safest possible environment for our students and for our campus community. I feel that President Dietz has worked well with the stakeholders to put together a plan utilizing the most recent, yet ever-changing information we have about the COVID-19 pandemic. I hear and appreciate that many of my colleagues are frustrated and concerned about moving forward this fall. Having recently undergone surgery, actually recently, last week, undergone surgery to remove a mass from my femur, I can understand these concerns. However, I also understand the concerns of my advisees who have goals to go on to professional healthcare programs post-graduation. Their concerns are shared by many such students across the United States. How can they gain the foundational knowledge and hands-on experiences they need as part of their collegiate experience if everything is online? The truth is, they can't, and we need to do everything we can to ensure that they have these opportunities. Learning is best accomplished when a student can interact, when students can interact with each other and their instructors in that classroom environment. I feel both President Dietz and the working groups have done a good job in light of all the ongoing and ever-changing landscapes of the pandemic in providing an opportunity for those students to do that. I thank the board for their time and wish you all good health.
Thank you. Next, we have Chris Merrill. Chris Merrill. Okay, I'm gonna call, we have one more chance for Chris to chime in. If not, that will conclude public comments for this morning. Final call for Chris Merrill. Okay. Thank you to everyone who took their time out this morning to present to the board. We appreciate all of the comments that we received today. If you have any reading materials, again, please make sure that those are submitted to our email address. Good morning, everyone, and thank you for joining us for the July 2020 Quarterly Meeting of the Board of Trustees. I want to begin my remarks by acknowledging that we're living in unprecedented times with enormous challenges for our country, our state, and our university. I mentioned to someone yesterday, I think it was Jada, trustee Turner, that I said, "I am so tired of saying unprecedented times, but there's really nothing else that will adequately describe what's going on," and that falls pretty short. We appreciate the efforts of the administration, the faculty, and the staff to maintain university operations while planning for a new academic year in this uncertain environment. We would all love to have some definitive answers with regard to this COVID-19 situation, but those answers just simply do not exist. So we have to work in the environment that we currently have. We know many of you are making personal and professional sacrifices to provide the best education possibilities for our students, and we appreciate that. I want to personally thank Dr. Dietz for keeping the board well-informed regarding university planning and response to COVID-19 pandemic. I think Dr. Dietz is probably, may have a little bit of tire speaking to me weekly. He probably speaks to me during this virus almost as much as he speaks to Marlene Dietz. So I appreciate him indulging me in all my many questions. That is when my legal training comes in, because I'll tell him one more question and pepper him with at least 10 more. And he's always very gracious to answer those questions, so I appreciate that. As many of you know, I traveled to campus on July 9th to receive an in-person update from President Dietz and his emergency managers, and to participate in a news briefing to update the campus and greater communities regarding university plans. Trustees Dowsky, Bone, and Lauterback also attended that briefing, and I thank them for taking time out of their busy schedules to do so. As I said during the event, I think I speak for the entire board in expressing my confidence in the manner in which President Dietz and his team are responding to the myriad of challenges posed by this pandemic. I also expressed our collective confidence in the Illinois State University faculty and staff to continue to provide the experience that has resulted in Illinois State's longstanding reputation for educational excellence. Meanwhile, I also believe it's important to acknowledge that some of our students, faculty, and staff have been disproportionately affected by COVID-19. Communities of color are being hit disproportionately hard by COVID-19 in terms of illness and death and its financial impact. It is critically important that we do all we can to assist our students who are in need to be successful in their educational pursuits during these challenging times. I would also call on all of us to fight for social justice in the communities and on our campus. All of us need to work together to overcome social oppression and to ensure that no person at Illinois State University faces harassment, exclusion, or discrimination based on their race, ethnicity, gender, sexuality, age, disability, or social class. We know that President Dietz and the interim assistant to the president for diversity and inclusion, Doris Houston, have a focus on social justice efforts at the university. As we start the new fiscal year, I want to express my appreciation to Governor Pritzker and the legislature for their support of higher education in the legislative session this spring. We applaud their decision to uphold state appropriations to the university at the same rate as fiscal year 2020. I want to remind you that the board voted to hold tuition, room and board, and room and board at the previous year's rates for the academic year 2021 in an effort to keep the cost of an education at Illinois State University as affordable as possible. This is the third year in the row that the tuition has not been increased. I want to congratulate admissions and all of you who play a role in recruiting students at Illinois State University. President Dietz keeps the board apprised of the status of applications, admits, and deposits. Despite these challenging times in recruitment, this year, I understand that enrollment this fall, so far, will be near normal. I want to congratulate the staff and university advancement for a very successful, very, very successful Redbird Rising campaign. You exceeded all of our expectations for raising funds for the university. I think we have some additional comments. I'm going to I'm going to, in my president's comments right now, or my chair comments right now. And if we have someone else who wants to make comment, please do so, because the next item on the agenda will be election of officers. Trustee Donahue?
Thank you, Chairperson Jones. First of all, I want to welcome Jada. I have not had the chance to meet you in person, but everything I've heard has been very impressive and outstanding. And hopefully, we'll get to meet sooner than later. I want to thank you as well, Chairwoman Jones, for your leadership during, as you call them, these unprecedented times. You have kept, at least myself and I assume the rest of the board, informed. And I appreciate all you're doing and the challenges that you're faced. And I know you collect that big paycheck as a result of being that chairperson. So I appreciate all that you're doing as well. And as others have said, these are crazy and wild times and tough choices. And I also want to thank President Dietz and the entire administration for what they've done. We've heard from a lot of speakers today, and people are very passionate on both sides of this issue. And there aren't a lot of right choices or good choices to make. But I know we have faced challenges in the past, none like we're faced today. And President Dietz and his team have always, at least in my opinion, been thoughtful and honest. And I have trust in his leadership and respect all he's doing. But one thing I have to say, Chairman, and I'll wrap this up, is I was a little alarmed by some of the media reports. I had read recently about members of the faculty having a closed meeting. And I also, in those reports, had read that we were threatened with potentially being in violation of the Open Meetings Act. And personally, this goes counter to everything we do here at Illinois State as it relates to shared governance and transparency and open communication. So I hope that's behind us, and I hope we don't ever see or hear of that again. But I felt the need, I had to say that, and I thank you for the time.
Thank you, trustee Donahue. Do any of the other trustees care to make comment at this time? There will certainly be an opportunity for comment later on in this board meeting. But if you feel the burning urge to speak now, I would allow that as well.
Yeah, Chairman Jones?
Just a second. Okay, so we have trustee Dobbsky first, and then I know there are some other trustees who want to chime in.
Yeah, no, I just wanted to say again that there's a Rocky just to mention in that. We heard a lot of opinions in that from the open session and that. And there is a lot of concern over everything that's going on in this community, as well as the country and that. So, but I think President Dietz and his administration has done an excellent job as far as communicating and thoroughly looking at all the aspects of opening up the campus to students and that. And I feel that he will be monitoring that as the school year continues on and that. And he will be very cautious as far as what is happening with all the numbers and all the issues and that. So, but he's been very transparent and very good with the communication to everybody and that. But another thing, being a businessperson in this community and having a number of businesses in this community, I think, well, first priority is the students and the faculty, the administration, as far as the health and the well-being. That is the priority of Dr. Dietz. But I think I'd have to voice and the concern about the economics of the community and that to have the campus open and that, because it is a benefit to everybody here that this was what the university came here in 1857 and has built, and this community is built around this university. So I think it's very imperative that we do, and talking to other businesspeople in the community, that we do have this campus open as much. But again, with monitoring everything and the concerns to make sure everything is safe with that priority being in place and that. But I just want to thank Dr. Dietz and the administration and that for, again, thoroughly being on top of this, and I'm sure it'll continue on and that. So, thank you.
Thank you, Bob. Do we have anyone else who care to make comments at this time? Trustee Lauterback?
I just want to echo what the two boys, two guys have been saying. I think it's really important that we allow, we let our faculty and our staff and our students and our administration know that we are 100% behind whatever is the best thing for our students. And I think that's what everybody has in their mind as to what they want to do. Nobody's going into this, you know, wanting to have something good or bad. I mean, we want to have everyone safe. I think that we will do that. And hopefully, whatever, you know, this pandemic or whatever, will start to slowly when people learn how to, you know, wear your mask, stay six feet apart, just keep that up. But, you know, I just want to say that we do have trust in our administration and look forward to seeing everyone in person at some point.
Thank you, trustee Lauterback. Any of the other trustees care to make comments at this time? Okay, thank you. We're gonna continue on with the rest of our business this morning. The next item on the agenda is election of officers. At this, at the first board meeting of each fiscal year, the trustees elect board officers for the year. As written in the Board of Trustees bylaws, during the first meeting of the new fiscal year, the chairperson and the secretary of the board will stand for election, and voting will be by secret ballot. Well, I don't think we're gonna be able to do it by secret ballot this morning, so... I will ask Secretary Lauterback to proceed with the first election. You're on mute, trustee Lauterback.
Thank you. Are there nominations for the office of chairperson of the Board of Trustees of Illinois State University?
I would like to nominate Julie Jones for the office of chairperson for the Board of Trustees.
Thank you. Trustee Jones has been nominated to be chairperson of the Board of Trustees by trustee Navarro. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
If there, are there any other nominations?
I move to close the nominations. This is trustee Donahue.
If there are no other nominations, I will ask for nominations to be closed. Is there a motion? We've already closed the nominations. Trustee Donahue. Trustee Jones has been nominated as chairperson of the Board of Trustees. I will now ask the trustees to vote. Please respond yea or nay after I call your name.
Secretary Lauterback, I would like to note for the record that I will abstain from the vote.
Thank you. Trustee Bone?
Yes.
Trustee Dobbsky?
Yes.
Trustee Donahue?
Yes.
You have been nervous for a minute, Rocky.
Trustee Jones abstains. Trustee Lauterback, yes. Trustee Navarro?
Yes.
Trustee Rossmark?
Yes.
Trustee Turner?
Yes.
Trustee Jones has been re-elected chairperson of the Board of Trustees of Illinois State University. Congratulations, and I return the floor to you.
Thank you, thank you, everyone. I am truly honored and humbled and appreciate the opportunity to serve in this role for yet another year. It really is an honor to serve as the chair of this board. I had a nice, long conversation yesterday with trustee Turner and bent her ear, probably back to her head, talking to her for over an hour. But I really did say that this is one of the most fulfilling roles that I serve. I have been supportive of Illinois State as an alum for over 20 years, and I look forward to being able to continue in this role, even in these challenging and, again, unprecedented times. It's still a great time to be a Redbird. It's a great time to be a member of this Board of Trustees, and it is a wonderful, wonderful honor for myself and for many others that I serve and continue to serve as chair here. So thank you for your confidence in me and in my shared leadership with you guys. So thank you for that. The floor is now open for nominations for secretary of the Board of Trustees of Illinois State University.
I nominate Mary Ann Lauterback as secretary of the ISU Board of Trustees.
Thank you. Trustee Lauterback has been nominated by trustee Bone. Is there, to be secretary of the Board of Trustees, is there a second?
I second that motion.
A second by trustee Rossmark. If there are no other nominations, I will ask for the nominations to be closed. Is there a motion to close the nominations?
I'll make a motion.
Trustee Dobbsky motions to close the nominations. Is there a second to that motion?
I'll second.
Second by trustee Navarro. Okay, trustee Lauterback, can you please take the role for the vote for secretary?
Chairperson Jones, I would like to note for the record, I will abstain from this vote.
Thank you.
Trustee Bone?
Yes.
Trustee Dobbsky?
Yes.
Trustee Donahue?
Yes.
Trustee Jones?
Yes.
Trustee Lauterback abstains. Trustee Navarro?
Yes.
Trustee Rossmark?
Yes.
Trustee Turner?
Yes.
Trustee Lauterback has been re-elected secretary of the board. Thank you, trustee Lauterback. And I look forward to working with, oh, I'm sorry, and would you like to say a few words?
Well, I thank all of you for allowing me to be the secretary again. I do enjoy it. And I enjoy working with Julie and with the administration as a Redbird for I don't know how many years now, although my ISU friends and I are about on our 50th year from when we met at ISU. With my three degrees from ISU, and my husband keeps saying I never quit going to school, I am very honored and I thoroughly enjoyed working on the board and being a Redbird. Thank you all.
Thank you, secretary Lauterback. With the beginning of the fiscal, of the new fiscal year, it is time to make appointments to the Board of Trustees committees and appointments to the university and state boards. The executive committee, consistent with the board bylaws, will consist of the chairperson, myself, trustee Jones, the board secretary, trustee Lauterback, and trustee Rocky Donahue. The audit committee will consist of trustee Sharon Rossmark, who will chair that committee, trustee Lauterback, and trustee Turner. The state affairs committee will include trustee Bob Navarro as committee chairperson, trustee Lauterback, and trustee Bone. Myself, trustee Jones, will serve as the liaison to the foundation board. Trustee Kathy Bone will serve as the liaison to the Alumni Association. And myself, trustee Jones, will serve as the liaison to the civil service merit board, where I also currently serve as chair. It is the duty of the board to select from the university staff and employee to serve as treasurer of the Board of Trustees. The treasurer serves in an ex officio capacity and receives and disperses all monies and reports to the trustees on the financial status and the fiscal affairs of the university. At Illinois State, that person traditionally has been the vice president of finance and planning. We will continue that tradition, so Dan Stevens will serve as treasurer. In addition, it is the duty of the board chairperson to designate a university representative to serve as an ex officio member of the Municipal Clerks Training Institute Committee. The committee serves in an advisory capacity and helps develop curriculum for municipal clerks' training courses. I have designated Rob Blimler, Director of Internal Auditing and University Ethics Officer for that task. I will now turn to Dr. President Dietz for his remarks. Dr. Dietz, you are currently on mute.
Sorry.
I know by now you're a Zoom expert, so...
Not as evidenced by that move, but nevertheless, thank you very much. And congratulations, Chairperson Jones, on your being re-elected as chair of the Board of Trustees for 2021. It's been a real pleasure to work with you.
You know what?
One second. Trustee Dobbsky, can you please put us on mute if you can hear me? Because we can hear you.
Sorry about that.
No worries.
It's been a pleasure to work with you, Chair Jones, this past year. I look forward to continuing to work with you as we move Illinois State University forward. Also want to say congratulations to trustee Lauterback on being re-elected as secretary. Again, look forward to continuing to work with you in this role. Also want to thank the entire board for your support and the time that you devote without compensation to the university. It is greatly appreciated all the time, particularly during these very tough times that we're going through right now. I also want to formally welcome our new student trustee, Jada Turner, onto the board. I've worked with Jada in her former role as vice president of the Student Government Association and her service on the Anti-Black Student Work Group and continue to work with her on that, in that group. I'm confident that she will represent your fellow students well on the Board of Trustees, and I look forward to continuing to work with you in other roles, and particularly this new role for you. So welcome aboard. Also want to begin my remarks today by extending my sincere thanks to the faculty and staff who've gone above and beyond during the COVID-19 crisis. Our faculty quickly pivoted to remote instruction in March and continue to provide a quality education for our students despite the challenges that we all faced. The faculty have been busy this summer, teaching courses online, conducting research, and preparing courses for the fall semester. Many faculty have changed the modalities of their courses in the fall due to COVID-19. This is no small task, and I appreciate their efforts very much. I also want to acknowledge the outstanding work of our essential staff. While all staff are important, some have been designated as essential during the pandemic. They continue to come to campus throughout the spring semester, while others work from home to clean our buildings, make repairs and improvements, prepare and serve food for students who remain in the residence halls, maintain housing operations, and provide for the safety and security of the entire campus. And they deserve all of our thanks, and we appreciate your cooperation and willingness to pitch in. It would be remiss if I also did not acknowledge the efforts of the Emergency Operations Center, the COVID-19 workgroups, the COVID-19 Steering Committee, and the cabinet as we continue to plan and implement actions to address this ongoing crisis. The Emergency Operations Center is the university's lead emergency coordinating body charged with emergency response and continuity activities. Members of the EOC are full-time university employees with other responsibilities who bring knowledge, experience, and expertise in areas critical to responding to emergencies. The EOC members have completed crisis management training through the FEMA Emergency Management Institute and regularly train on crisis response and crisis management with local emergency response organizations. The EOC and workgroups are meeting on almost daily basis, researching the latest information, formulating draft plans, evaluating plans, revising plans as new information becomes available, which seems almost on a daily basis, and implementing these plans. We are very fortunate to have a director of the emergency management with considerably experience handling crises at the local, state, and national levels. Eric Hodges has provided outstanding leadership as we continue to work at mitigating the effects of the COVID-19. Chair Jones, I also appreciate that you raised the importance of diversity, inclusion, and social justice at Illinois State University in your remarks. I will continue to work tirelessly to make Illinois State a campus that embraces the humanity, the gifts, and the diverse contributions of each and every individual who joins the Redbird community. I have stated before that there is no room on our campus for bigotry and hatred and have asked each member of the university community to embrace and carry out the core values of fostering an inclusive environment characterized by cultural understanding and engagement, ethical behavior, and a commitment to social justice. As we enter a new academic year, I will again be emphasizing these expectations to the Illinois State University community as we address any potential incidents that may fail to meet these expectations. To assist the university in addressing diversity, inclusion, and social justice, Dr. Doris Houston was hired as the interim assistant to the president for diversity and inclusion and officially began her duties on July 1, though she's been working in this space for literally years prior to becoming an official part of the university in this new role. She will work with the university vice presidents to expand university efforts and strategic plan development and implementation, faculty, staff, and student recruitment and retention, and professional development through a lens of diversity, inclusion, and social justice. The position will oversee the systematic review of the Campus Climate Implementation Task Force and work as a liaison to the Diversity and Inclusion Council. Dr. Houston has been with the University School of Social Work since 2005, most recently serving as the school's interim director. Doris, we're delighted to have you on board. As Board Chair Jones said in her remarks, we're also thankful for the support from Governor Pritzker and the legislature and the investment in higher education this session. We've all lived through a time for two years when we didn't have a budget. And I'm here to say that having a budget is a lot better than not having one. We've all lived through a time for two years when we didn't have a budget, and I'm here to say that having a budget is a lot better than not having one. And having one for FY '21 that will mirror the FY '20 budget is indeed very, very much appreciative, appreciated. And the investment that the legislature and the governor is making in education right now during a tough time is really outstanding. So like other universities across, unlike universities across Illinois and across the country, we have faced financial challenges this year as everybody else has done too, but to date the university has expended over $28 million of our own funds related to costs incurred due to COVID-19. And so while the flat funding is very much appreciated, the expenses have not been flat. And to put this $28 million that we've already expended in perspective, the $28 million is roughly 40% of our entire state appropriation for fiscal year 2021. So the fiscal challenges continue to mount. Each year, Illinois State, like other public universities in Illinois, becomes more dependent on tuition and fees to fund the operation of the university. For that very reason, recruitment, enrollment, and retention of students are very important to the financial viability of the university and to this community. Despite the uncertainty of how COVID-19 will affect the fall semester, I am proud to report that enrollment for the fall is strong. As of July the 17th, registration for the fall semester was just 1% below registration at this time last year. And the numbers of full-time and college students have also dipped a little bit, but very modestly. So we're anticipating the fall enrollment to be very strong. Want to say thanks to, in particular, to Janet Albrecht, Jeff Mavros, and the entire enrollment management staff, the admissions staff, housing staff, the registrar's office, academic advisors, and everyone who helps make enrollment a success story at Illinois State University. We've just concluded our second-ever fundraising campaign on June 30th in a record-setting manner, securing more than $180.9 million during the Redbirds Rising, the campaign for Illinois State. The seven-year campaign started in 2013 with a $150 million target, and then it was publicly launched in 2017. The historic campaign was supported by 56,143 donors, of which more than 30,000 were alumni, and a remarkable 27,000 friends and alumni made their first gift to the university, which creates a terrific foundation as we go forward in our fundraising activities. More than $70 million in gifts and commitments designated in Redbirds Rising directly benefit ISU students. This is the example of how our donors want the ISU experience to remain accessible and affordable to students. Our student-focused approach extends far beyond the classroom and we remain grateful to all those who invest in our students, faculty, and staff. The level of support generated through Redbirds Rising speaks to the confidence our supporters have in the value of an ISU degree as well as our direction. I want to recognize the University Advancement Division under the leadership of Vice President Vickerman, and especially the development staff and deans who are tireless in their efforts to secure support and inspire private gift investment at record levels. Also, I want to give a special thank you to our campaign donors and volunteers, especially our campaign co-chairs, who were Dan and Pam Kelly, Ken and Debbie Glover, and Jim and Carol Monier for their leadership and generosity in making Redbirds Rising a campaign that truly elevated private gift support and our culture of philanthropy at the university. It seems that every semester I have the opportunity to boast about the GPAs of our student athletes. Spring semester is no exception. Except spring semester, they outperform expectations with an overall GPA of a 3.61, which is a new athletics department record. So thanks to the Director of Athletics, Larry Lyons, Assistant Director for Academics and Life Skills, Joe Klausner, the academic advisors, the coaches, and all the staff that were involved in helping ensure that our student athletes excel in the classroom and not just on the field, court, course, and track. And another academic achievement by our student athletes, Mary Crompton from women's basketball, and Jake Gillum from men's track and field have been named Bone Scholars. The highest university-wide honor given to undergraduate students, Bone Scholars are selected through a rigorous campus-wide competition based upon their scholarly achievements and their engagement and leadership and activities in the university community and beyond. Last year, the average GPA among the Bone Scholars was a 3.96, just four hundredths of a point beyond, off of a perfect GPA. Now I have a few introductions to make this morning. I've already talked about Dr. Houston, but I would normally ask these individuals to stand and be recognized, and that's of course not possible, but I want to share some information about them and if those that are on the Zoom call would wave from where you are, that would be appreciated. And I will begin with the Office of the Provost. Dr. Andover Tarhuli became Provost officially on July 1, although he was engaged in several meetings and activities before then while finishing his duties at State University of New York, Binghamton. Dr. Tarhuli was selected through a nationwide search that luckily concluded in early March before the pandemic changed all of our lives. Originally from Nigeria, Dr. Tarhuli most recently served as Vice Provost and Dean of the Graduate School at SUNY Binghamton. Previously, Dr. Tarhuli served as the Executive Associate Dean of Atmospheric and Geographic Sciences and Chair of the Department of Geography and Environmental Sustainability at the University of Oklahoma. A physical geographer, Dr. Tarhuli's work on climate impacting water scarcity and security has been featured in publications such as National Geographic and Nature, among many other publications. Dr. Tarhuli, we're delighted that you've joined us today. Would you please wave at the group here? Thanks so much for the good work that you're doing. Dr. Craig McLaughlin began his duties as Associate Vice President for Research and Graduate Studies on July 1, replacing Dr. John Bauer, who returned to the faculty. Dr. McLaughlin has served as Department Chair and Interim Department Chair of Chemistry since 2013 and began his career at the university in 2002 as an Assistant Professor in the Department of Chemistry. I'm not sure that Craig is on the Zoom, but thanks for joining us, Craig, and thanks for your leadership in this new role. Dr. Amelia Noel Elkins became Interim Assistant Vice President for Student Success effective July 1. Dr. Noel Elkins has been tasked with leading students' success initiative for academic affairs with primary responsibility for building partnerships to develop campus-wide coordinated approaches that lead to students who feel supported, included, successful, and part of the Redbird community. Dr. Noel Elkins has served as Director of the University College since 2005, and she previously served as the Associate Athletic Director at Indiana University. We're delighted to have you join the administrative team as well. And from the President's Office, Katie Killian officially began her duties as the Interim Assistant to the President for Communications, although she has been functioning in that role unofficially since the university initiated its COVID-19 response in February. Katie also serves as the Assistant Vice President for Student Affairs and will remain in this role in addition to her new duties. So she will report jointly to Vice President Johnson and to myself, but the coordination of communication is an important feature and was recommended by a consultant group that came in this last year, and we're delighted to have Katie in her new role. Since the legislature is not in session right now, Dr. Jonathan Lackland will not be providing an update today. Instead, we will turn to the Campus Communications Report, and I would not like now to call on the spokesperson for the Campus Communications Committee, Elizabeth Chubb, for a report. Elizabeth is the Director of Advisement and the School of Communication. Elizabeth?
Thank you, everyone, and good morning. On behalf of the Campus Communication Committee, representing Academic Senate, AP Council, Civil Service Council, and the Student Government Association, we'd like to begin by extending a warm Redbird welcome to our new Provost, Dr. Andover Tarhuli. We recognize that you are stepping into your role at a critical time in our university's history, and we offer you our deepest support and wish you the best as you transition to ISU. We also want to thank our outgoing Provost, Dr. Jan Murphy, for her dedication and leadership during her long tenure at ISU. Dr. Murphy, we wish you the best for a wonderful and well-deserved retirement. During the past few months, we've faced unprecedented challenges as we continue to cope with the COVID-19 pandemic. We'd like to offer sincere thanks to the administration and the members of the many working groups on campus who are diligently developing plans to safely launch the 2020-2021 academic year. We understand and appreciate the difficulty of your task as information changes daily. We are grateful that you are allowing for fluid plans, increased flexibility, and for decisions to evolve as new information comes to light. We urge you to continue regular communication with the campus community. While many of us may feel overwhelmed by the amount of information to process, regular communication also helps instill a sense of calm amidst so much uncertainty. We'd also like to thank the many Redbirds who have contributed their ideas and continue to help the university problem solve constructively. ISU has a rich history of shared governance, which allows for voices from multiple campus constituents to be heard during crucial conversations. The shared governance structures we have in place will allow us to continue to navigate this difficult time and make the process as inclusive and collaborative as possible. We invite and welcome all opportunities to discuss problems and find solutions. We'd also like to thank the many people on campus who are tirelessly working to implement the recommendations in the Redbird return plans. While much about the 2020-2021 academic year remains uncertain, ISU employees continue to think creatively to find solutions to best serve our students. Our transition this past spring to a virtual environment, while a bit rocky at first, should be applauded. We thrived under pressure and demonstrated the power of what we can do virtually. While we still crave the return of a traditional campus environment, the creativity shown across campus will make us, makes us optimistic for the fall semester. This will be a true campus-wide effort. We've come a long way since the pandemic started, but there is still much work to be done. We stand with minoritized students and stay committed to ISU's core value of diversity and inclusion. Amidst a global pandemic where communities of color are seeing a disproportionate impact, our society continues to grapple with questions regarding social justice and systemic racism. Dr. Doris Houston recently began her work as the Interim Assistant to the President for Diversity and Inclusion. These are challenging issues, and we are eager to see recommendations from Dr. Houston and her Advisory Council to learn how our campus can continue to move diversity issues to the forefront of our work. We urge all campus members to embrace our stated value of fostering an inclusive environment characterized by cultural understanding and engagement, ethical behavior, and a commitment to social justice. In that vein, we also stand with our international students and supported the university's opposition to recent policy changes from U.S. Immigration and Customs Enforcement regarding remote learning for international students. We're proud that ISU's opposition, along with numerous other universities statewide and nationwide, has led to the repeal of these concerning policy changes. We recognize, however, that our international students still face an array of challenges as we turn our attention to the fall semester, and we stand with them. Finally, while we understand profoundly how the pandemic crisis has impacted our local economy, including many small businesses and landlords, we urge them to keep student health and safety in mind as they adapt their own policies and cleaning practices in common places and high-touch surfaces. We value the partnership we have with the Bloomington Normal communities, and we want to support each other to remain healthy and vibrant. Among these challenges, we recognize the ongoing financial impact of the COVID-19 pandemic as well. We're pleased to see that fall 2020 student enrollments remain strong and that the state of Illinois has approved an FY 2021 operating budget that is equal to last fiscal years. We are aware of the unknown financial variables facing the institution and appreciate the steps of our finance and planning team, appreciate the steps our finance and planning team is taking to protect the financial future of ISU. We're incredibly grateful that ISU employees, unlike peers at other institutions, have not had to face furloughs or layoffs, and we continue to advocate for creative budget planning that protects all ISU employees. Another financial stressor relates to the impending changes to the Suez self-managed retirement plans. Employees impacted by these changes are experiencing increased anxiety as they feel they don't have enough information or enough time to make informed decisions on their investments and their future in retirement. We would urge the Board to advocate for greater clarity from the Suez Board to assist these employees in making the best decisions possible for a secure retirement. The challenges we currently face are numerous and unprecedented, but one thing is certain. ISU is a family. And while families may not always agree with how to get things done, we share a common purpose. We all care about our values, and we all want ISU to succeed. It's this attitude that will allow us to persevere and emerge stronger on the other side. Thank you, and go Redbirds!
Thank you very much, Elizabeth. In closing my general remarks, I want to emphasize that our plans for this coming academic year remain fluid. It's, there, many of our plans are also made in the context of what's happening in public higher education, not only in the state of Illinois, but really throughout the entire country. I'm on phone calls every Wednesday with all the other presidents and chancellors of all the other public universities, and we're all doing the best that we can with the very uncertain kinds of situations in many cases, but there's a broader context than what's going on just here at Illinois State and also in the Bloomington and Normal community. And I wanted people to know about that. Adjustments will continue to be made as situations dictate. We will continue to seek input from the leaders of our shared governance groups and the university community, and we will communicate these plans and adjustments in a timely manner. It will take the concerted efforts of the entire university community working together to overcome the challenges that we will undoubtedly face this year. We need to be flexible and support each other in our efforts to provide our students with the quality education that they deserve. Chair Jones, there are no reports today, and with your permission, I will move on to the resolutions, of which there are several.
President Deetz, you may proceed.
Thank you very much. The first resolution is Resolution Number 2020-0719, Approval of Master of Science in Low Vision and Blindness. The proposed MS in Low Vision and Blindness is an online degree program that will provide individuals who hold a license to teach in elementary, middle, or secondary schools in the state with professional educator license, a PEL, with specialized training in low vision and blindness. This training will enable graduates to apply for a special education license in blind and visually impaired through the Illinois State Board of Education and fill an educator position such as a teacher of students with visual impairment. The program is designed particularly for Illinois teachers who seek to specialize in special education low vision without having to complete another four-year teaching degree in special education. The program will be administered by the Department of Special Education and the College of Education. Program proposal has been developed by faculty and the department in response to the special education teacher shortage in Illinois and the surrounding states. The program will provide curriculum content that is designed to add knowledge that is specific to visual impairments. The online delivery system provides access to those who are in more remote areas of the state and to those who live in locations that makes weekly travel to NIU and ISU, which are the only two universities in the state offering the degree prohibitive. Existing faculty teaching the undergraduate specialist in low vision and blindness sequence of the special education BS program sequence of the special education BS program will deliver the new program. No new additional facilities or resources are required to implement the new program. Should you approve this resolution, the Illinois Board of Higher Education and the Higher Learning Commission, the accrediting agency for the universities in the region, must subsequently approve the new major as well. I ask for your approval of this resolution, and I also want to thank the faculty for coming forward with a much-needed proposal.
So moved.
Thank you, President Dietz. Trustee Lauterback, can you, oh, first of all, can I have a motion and a second for this?
Lauterback.
Motion from Trustee Lauterback, do I have a second?
Second, Trustee Bone.
I have a second from Trustee Bone, is there any discussion? Hearing non-Trustee Lauterback, please proceed with calling the roll for the vote.
Trustee Bone?
Yes.
Trustee Dobski?
Yes.
Trustee Donahue?
Yes.
Trustee Jones?
Yes.
Trustee Lauterback, yes. Trustee Navarro?
Yes.
Trustee Rossmark?
Yes.
Trustee Turner?
Yes.
Madam Chairman, the motion passes.
Thank you, Madam Trustee. Madam Secretary, Dr. Dietz, you can continue with the next resolution.
Thank you very much for the support of the last resolution. The next resolution, Number 2020-0720, Property Insurance Authorization. University maintains property insurance and business interruption insurance valued at approximately $2 billion. For fiscal year 2021, the university's property will have per occurrence coverage of up to $500 million with a per occurrence deductible of $100,000. The exposure is mitigated by the university's self-insurance fund of approximately $1.2 million. Total insurance premium cost for fiscal year 2021 is projected to substantially increase to approximately $1.2 million, a $519,000 or 76% premium increase over the prior fiscal year. This increase in premiums is primarily attributed to a significant increase in large claims submitted by partner schools across the consortium, increased coverage risk, and potential for loss given greater frequencies of claims arising from natural disasters, and an overall detrimental insurance market brought on by the COVID-19 pandemic across the United States and indeed the world. We are requesting board authorization to purchase property insurance and business interruption insurance of an amount not to exceed $1.2 million for the fiscal year. The funds for the insurance coverages come from general revenue and auxiliary facility system or AFS operating revenues, and I ask for your approval of this resolution.
Thank you, Dr. Dietz. Do I have a motion and a second for this resolution?
So moved, Trustee Donahue.
I have a motion from Trustee Donahue, do I have a second?
Second. Rossmark.
I have a second with Trustee Rossmark, any discussion? Only comment I will make is that I know that these have to be challenging times for insurance, but one of the things that stood out for me in the analysis of this is that some of this is related to large claims from other universities. So I would hope that, again, that we are exploring all avenues to see if we can kind of separate ourselves from the pack and perhaps get, get some reduced pricing on this insurance, and I know that the university is proactive in doing so, so I thank you for that. Any, you want to have any further comments on that, either VP Stevens or Dr. Dietz?
If I may, we are, as we speak, and the consortium itself is, we are participating in a leadership role for an RFP in this process. There are over 165 university and college campuses in the, in the consortium. And unfortunately, and I apologize for using the same term from before, unprecedented losses that occurred this past year, there were over $322 million of losses that occurred in the consortium. Where, and from an insurance perspective, they had to pay all those claims out. They paid out claims close to $4 in losses for every $1 that they received in premiums. And so it is an unprecedented year. We are, as a consortium, trying to, to reach out and make sure that this particular year is, is only a single year, and perhaps next year, we'll be able to return to some normal types of, of risk mitigation as well as, as well as insurance companies willing to bid. I was talking to Dave Marple, five years ago, we, we only needed one company to cover the entire consortium program. Today, there are 10 companies that are needed to cover that, so it's very much a difficult time in the insurance environment, but we are, we're definitely going to be pursuing options for ISU alone or ISU in the consortium with some, hopefully some updated quotes by next year.
Thank you, Vice President Stevens, we appreciate that additional information. Again, trustees, do we have any additional questions, concerns, discussion on this particular resolution? Hearing non-Trustee Secretary Lauterback, can you please proceed with calling the roll for vote?
Trustee Bone?
Yes.
Trustee Dobski?
Yes.
Trustee Donahue?
Yes.
Trustee Jones?
Yes.
Trustee Lauterback, yes. Trustee Navarro?
Yes.
Trustee Rossmark?
Yes.
Trustee Turner?
Yes.
Madam President, the motion passes.
Thank you, Madam Secretary. President Dietz, next resolution, please.
Thank you very much. Next resolution is Resolution Number 2020-0721, Approval of Town of Normal Fire Services Agreement. University has a governmental agreement with the Town of Normal for fire protection and emergency services provided to the university campus. This agreement is adjusted each year to reflect costs associated with provision of their services. The Town of Normal utilizes a price index developed by the Illinois Municipal League and is used in university communities across the state to determine the rates for these services. The new agreement is effective from July 1, 2020 through June 30 of 2021, and includes a reimbursement cost of $604,956, which is a 2.05% increase over the previous year, and I ask for your approval of this resolution.
Thank you, Dr. Dietz. Do we have a motion and a second for this particular resolution?
I so moved.
Motion by Trustee Navarro, do we have a second?
A second.
A second by Trustee Dobski, any discussion? Hearing none, Secretary, oh, I'm sorry, Trustee Donahue, did you have comment?
No, I'm muting for the vote, sorry.
Thank you. Trustee Secretary Lauterback, can you please proceed with the roll call for the vote?
Absolutely. Trustee Bone?
Yes.
Trustee Dobski?
Yes.
Trustee Donahue?
Yes.
Trustee Jones?
Yes.
Trustee Lauterback, yes. Trustee Navarro?
Yes.
Trustee Rossmark?
Yes.
Trustee Turner?
Yes.
Madam President, the motion passes.
Thank you, Madam Secretary. Dr. Dietz, can you please proceed with the next resolution?
Thank you. Next resolution is Resolution Number 2020-07/22, Approval of Foundation Support Agreement. Illinois State University Foundation is a private corporation whose purpose is to solicit, secure, and manage private gifts and other resources, and to use those gifts and resources to support the distinctive excellence of Illinois State University. State of Illinois Legislative Audit Commission University Guidelines authorize universities to have formal relationships with foundations for provision of such services. Such a relationship is defined in a memorandum of understanding between the Board of Trustees of Illinois State University and Illinois State University Foundation and signed on May the 9th of 2008. Today, we are requesting the board's approval to contract with the Illinois State University Foundation for the provision of development and fundraising services for FY 2021 for annual cash and in-kind consideration not to exceed $2,760,000, or basically a zero increase from fiscal year 2020 funding levels. Obviously, this relationship has really put us in great stead in the past, and I think will continue to do so in the future, and I ask for your approval of this resolution.
Thank you, Dr. Dietz. Do we have a motion and a second for this resolution?
So moved.
We have a motion by Trustee Bone, we have a second?
Second.
Second by Trustee Lauterback, any discussion? I just have one comment, this is my favorite increase number, zero, so thank you for that. Whenever we're talking about paying something, I love to hear zero increase, so Trustee Lauterback, can you please proceed calling the roll for the vote?
Trustee Bone?
Yes.
Trustee Dobski?
Yes.
Trustee Donahue?
Yes.
Trustee Jones?
Yes.
Trustee Lauterback, yes. Trustee Navarro?
Yes.
Trustee Rossmark?
Yes.
Trustee Turner?
Yes.
Madam President, the motion passes.
Thank you, Madam Secretary. Dr. Dietz, you may proceed with our next resolution.
Thank you very much. The next resolution is Resolution Number 2020-07/23, Authorization to Issue Auxiliary Facility System Revenue Bonds Series 2020A. At the May 10th of 2019 meeting, the Board of Trustees authorized funds to design an air ventilation system and finish an upgrade project in Watterson Towers to provide additional fresh air delivery to each student's room at an amount not to exceed $33 million. That project was the Watterson Towers Project. On June 24th of 2019, a declaration of official intent was expressed to allow the board to reimburse itself for costs relating to the Watterson Towers Project for the proceeds of auxiliary facilities system revenue bonds to be issued at a later date. The Watterson Towers Project was completed in November of 2019 at an actual cost of approximately $31.3 million, saving $1.7 million off the original projected cost. At the February 21, 2020 meeting, the Board of Trustees authorized funds to plan, design, and renovate 301 South Main Street for a multicultural center at an amount not to exceed $5.5 million. The Multicultural Center project was delayed due to the stay-at-home order in the spring and currently remains under construction. It is expected to be mostly completed by the end of the spring of 2021. University determined that it made good fiscal sense to reimburse itself for the Watterson Towers Project and the Multicultural Center through the issuance of revenue bonds. The total cost of the Series 2020A projects, Watterson Towers projects, and Multicultural Center are currently projected at $36.8 million. With additional costs of issuance estimated at less than $200,000, the requested principal amount for the Illinois State University Auxiliary Facility System Revenue Bonds Series 20, Series 2020A, the Series 2020A bonds is projected to be $37 million. University solicited short-term fixed-rate, tax-exempt financing options from banks to allow for additional time for the university to refinance the Series 2020A bonds within the next three to five years into a traditional, long-term, tax-exempt, fixed-rate, 30-year bonds in a normal credit financing environment absent negative fiscal pressures from COVID-19 pandemic factors and stability at the state level. The most favorable proposal was received from J.P. Morgan Chase, known as JPM, for Series 2020A bonds maturing not later than 30 years from their date of issuance with a commitment to hold Series 2020A bonds as purchaser for a five-year period, the five-year term, at an indicative rate of 1.48% per annum. If the board approves JPM's bid, it will enter into a continuous covenant agreement dated today's date. This activity simply reimburses ourselves for expenditures already paid at a low interest rate and returns cash to those accounts. This will provide the university financial flexibility during these uncertain times. I ask for your approval to issue bonds in order to finance the Watterson Towers project and the Multicultural Center project, and to pay the cost of issuing the bonds in accordance with the procedures detailed in the resolution.
Thank you, President Dietz. Do we have a motion and a second for this resolution?
Make a motion.
Trustee Dobski, do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Trustee Rossmark, do we have any discussion? Trustee Donahue first, and then we're going to have Trustee Lauterback.
Thank you, Sherwin Jones. I just want to thank President Dietz and Dan Stevens. Both of those gentlemen took time out of their busy days to, to walk me through this and, and calm any fears or questions I have. I think this makes a lot of sense. It's, it's going to be good for the university, especially as Dr. Dietz pointed out at the end of having that flexibility of the resources in these uncertain times, so I wholeheartedly endorse this, but I really just wanted to thank President Dietz and Dan for, for walking me through it. Thank you.
Trustee Lauterback?
You took my, my excitement out of there, Rocky, you said the same thing. I, I sincerely appreciate it. It's so much easier to, you know, focus on the resolution when we know exactly what it means instead of just going eh, you know? And then we ask these questions, but I sincerely appreciate knowing what it means and how important it is to the university. So thanks to both of you again. It, it just, when we get the information and get a lot of information, it just makes life a lot easier and makes our job much more easy, but thank you.
Thank you both, Trustee Donahue and Trustee Lauterback. I echo those comments, and I also wanted to point out something that we received, any information that we received regarding that Watterson Towers project and the fact that it came in $1.7 million under the original projected cost, that's not something you often hear when you talk about a construction project. So I thank you so much again, Illinois State. I, it's to be commended for continuing to be a university that is fiscally responsible and that, you know, we make sure that wherever we can, we try to save funds, so, so that, that's greatly appreciated. I mean, again, I've served on many committees about many expenses, and you don't often see a $1.7 million savings from costs that are projected. So I appreciate all of the people who were involved in, in making sure that project came in, not at budget, but under budget. I do have a question that may not, you know, it's, it's related to this because it is part of this bond resolution. The Multicultural Center, I know, was delayed because of the stay-at-home order. When was it projected to be completed? I see it's now spring of 2021, and is that delay costing us really any funds right now? That might be a question for Dan, it might be a combo question for Dan and Dr. Johnson, not sure, Dr. Stevens and Dr. Johnson, about the completion. I don't know.
I think I'll kick this one to Vice President Stevens first, and then Vice President Johnson, and have some comments as well.
Thank you, Dr. Dietz.
Thank you for the question. We actually receive a project, we have a, a project team managing this, and I get a weekly update, and I actually this morning got the latest update. Unfortunately, the delay of the project came, it could have been the more worst time. When we were bidding, doing what's called the pre-bid process back in the February, early March timeframe, where contractors are brought into the facility, they're looking at all the variety of things that need to be done. That pre-bid process is a necessity for, for contractors to see the property. When the pandemic hit, the governor's stay-at-home orders prevented us from doing that, and so all those bids, that, those, all those bids had to be delayed. We have received this week all the seven prime contract bids. They're being reviewed and, and will be executed, should be executed shortly. One thing noted that David Gill provided is we've been very rigid about the responsibility of having BEP utilization plans, and he made a, a point that six out of the seven low bids met our utilization goals, and the, the one low bid that didn't just simply had elapsed BEC, BEP certification, there's a cure period for that, so they're going to be reached out to them to, to try to, to recertify themselves so that we can make sure all those contracts are flowing through properly there. It is our number one project on our campus, and we've got our entire teams working on it. It is a pretty substantial project. Right now, the estimates from David's team, it actually looks like we had a cost of not to exceed about $5.5 million. That, right now, we believe if things go well, we should maybe end up somewhere around $5 million or possibly a little bit lower. So, which may be able to save us opportunity to in these proceeds from these funds to continue to make other renovations or other furniture purchases or other things we need to do with the proceeds from this debt issuance. But right now, we're trying to get this done as quickly as we can in the springtime, and so hopefully weather will hold for us, and the equipment that we're ordering will come through, and so, but we will continue to provide updates to the board and through the president to make sure that everybody's aware of the priority of this.
I have an additional question, Vice President Stevens. I know that we talk about definitely diversity and inclusion and equity here. Are we talking about? Are we talking about, and you may not have this information yet, but what about women and minority contractors or subcontractors working on this project?
The reference that what we refer to as BEP, BEP in themselves covers lots of categories, and so I can find out from this information as to exactly how those percentages may play themselves out. I don't have that at this day, but it was very comforting to see that our contractors that are bidding on our projects realize how serious we are in making sure that those bids include all the categories and all the efforts that whenever those contractors can provide that kind of service.
Thank you, Vice President Stevens. If you could get us that information, that would be wonderful.
Thank you. Appreciate your question.
Before I turn to Vice President Johnson, I don't want to preempt a couple of resolutions that are coming up, but you will see shortly here that the excitement around the Multicultural Center has generated some private fundraising and some naming opportunities. And Vice President Johnson and Vice President Vickerman and others have continued to promote that, and I think we're only starting all of that. So I think it's going to be a ripe place for people to not only be passionate about, but also hopefully invest in. So Vice President Johnson, you want to say anything about this? You're muted. You're muted, LJ. There you go.
Little toggle's not working, okay. I would agree with President Dietz. The excitement remains high on campus regarding the Multicultural Center. We are in the process right now of finalizing and securing the leadership and the staffing pattern for not just the facility, but for the programs. More information will be released at the start of August, actually, as relates to the leadership and those positions. We are finalizing those positions and have students and staff involved in the job descriptions and the search process in that sense. And we are proceeding with orientation as well as the programs for the fall and spring semester as if the facility were in place. So you'll hear more information about some of the different systems and structures that we will have in place, and we'll actually start utilizing and leveraging the name and the phrase Multicultural Center initially as we get into the fall semester. So again, very excited about it. We'll be hiring some new folks and announcing the leadership very soon.
Thank you, Dr. Johnson. Dr. Dietz, you have any further comment?
I do not, thank you.
Okay, trustee Lauterback, will you please proceed with calling the roll for the vote? You're on mute. Trustee Lauterback.
I'm trying to be quiet over here. I know that's hard to believe. Trustee Bone.
Yes.
Trustee Dobski.
Yes.
Donahue.
Yes.
Trustee Jones.
Yes.
Trustee Lauterback, yes. Trustee Navarro.
Yes.
Trustee Ross Mark.
Yes.
Trustee Turner.
Turner, you're on mute.
Yes, I'm sorry.
The motion passes.
Thank you, Madam Secretary. President Dietz, please proceed with the next resolution.
Thank you very much. Next resolution is Resolution Number 2020-07/25, Authorization to Name Conference Room. This resolution requests your approval to name conference room 101D in the Multicultural Center as the Michael D. Schirmer Conference Room in recognition of his financial gift in support of Illinois State University. Michael earned a bachelor's science degree in political science in 1973 and a master of science and education in 1978 from Illinois State University. He began his career in student affairs in 1974 as the assistant to the vice president and dean of student affairs. From 1978 to 1998, he served as the director of the Office of Student Life and student government advisor. He served in a variety of roles in student affairs until his retirement in 2010. I've had the great pleasure to know and work with Mike since I came to the university in 2011, and his many contributions professionally and personally are greatly appreciated, and I ask your approval for this resolution.
Do we have a motion and a second for this resolution?
I so move.
I second.
Motion by trustee Navarro, second by trustee Lauterback. Any discussion?
Only that I think it's a well-deserved honor. I think it's wonderful.
Thank you, Secretary Lauterback. Can you please proceed with the roll call for the vote?
Surely. Trustee Bone.
Yes.
Trustee Dobski.
Yes.
Trustee Donahue.
Yes.
Trustee Jones.
Yes.
Trustee Lauterback, yes. Trustee Navarro.
Yes.
Trustee Ross Mark.
Yes.
Trustee Turner.
Yes.
The motion passes.
Thank you, Madam Secretary. Dr. Dietz, you may proceed with the next resolution.
Thank you very much. Next resolution is Resolution Number 2020-07/26, Authorization to Name Rehearsal Rooms. This resolution requests your approval to name rehearsal/multi-purpose room 105 SF and 115 SF in the Multicultural Center as the Dr. Frank Namie Rod and Dr. Teresa A. Capek rehearsal room and the Charles J. Jack and Joanne Cardwell rehearsal room in recognition of the financial gifts in support of Illinois State University. Dr. Namie Rod earned a bachelor's degree in mathematics from Illinois State, a master's degree in computer science from Southern Illinois University, and an MBA from Lake Forest Graduate School of Business, and a PhD in computer science from Illinois Institute of Technology. He's the chief executive officer and founder of Intelligent Medical Objects, IMO Incorporated, and is an expert in the application of standards-based terminology solutions to problems in healthcare. Dr. Capek earned a bachelor's degree in biological sciences from Illinois State University and a doctor of medicine from the Rosalind Franklin University of Medicine and Science. She practiced as an obstetrics and gynecology physician in Chicago before her recent retirement. Together, Doctors Namie Rod and Capek created Leap of Faith Foundation to accelerate informatics and innovation and the distribution of terminology-enabled applications from academic centers across electronic health record systems. Jack and Joanne Cardwell were Frank Namie Rod's host parents while he attended Illinois State, and they remain very close friends through today. The relationship between Frank and Teresa and Jack and Joanne is a shining example of multiple cultures coming together at Illinois State University. I ask for your approval of this resolution to name these rehearsal rooms in the Multicultural Center after those individuals.
So moved.
Thank you, President Dietz. We have a motion by trustee Bone, we have a second?
Second.
Second by trustee Ross Mark. Do we have any discussion? Seeing none, Madam Secretary, can you please proceed with calling the roll for the vote?
Trustee Bone.
Yes.
Trustee Dobski.
Yes.
Trustee Donahue.
Yes.
Trustee Jones.
Yes.
Trustee Lauterback, yes. Trustee Navarro.
Yes.
Trustee Ross Mark.
Yes.
Trustee Turner.
Yes.
Madam President, the motion passes.
Thank you, Madam Secretary. Dr. Dietz, you may proceed with the next resolution.
Thank you very much, and this will be my last resolution, Number 2020-07/24, Approval of 2021 Board Meeting Calendar. I bring to you today proposed dates for the quarterly meetings of the Board of Trustees for 2021, and ask for your approval of the 2020 Board Calendar Meeting, or Board Meeting Calendar, sorry.
Do I have a motion and a second?
So moved.
My trustee Lauterback, second.
Navarro.
Trustee Navarro, do we have any discussion? Okay, hearing none, can we please have the vote, Madam Secretary?
Trustee Bone.
Yes.
Trustee Dobski.
Yes.
Trustee Donahue.
Yes.
Trustee Jones.
Yes.
Trustee Lauterback, yes. Trustee Navarro.
Yes.
Trustee Ross Mark.
Yes.
Trustee Turner.
Yes.
Madam Chairperson, the motion passes.
Thank you, Madam Secretary. Dr. Dietz.
That concludes my remarks and resolutions for the day. Thank you very much.
Thank you, President Dietz. I would now entertain a motion to move into executive session for the purpose of considering the appointment, employment, compensation, discipline, performance, or dismissal of specific employees pursuant to 5 ILS Section 120/2C1, collective negotiating matters between the university and its employees, 5 ILCS Section 120/2C2, litigation which has been filed and is pending before a court or an administrative tribunal where it's probable or imminent as allowed in 5 ILCS Section 120/2C11, and the purchase or lease of real property as allowed in 5 ILCS Section 122C5. I would ask that we have a brief break in between this executive session, and if maybe we can all have a moment to refresh, stretch our legs, do a couple jumping jacks, whatever else we need to do, and that we reconvene at 11:10, if that's okay for everyone. Can I have a motion and a second?
So moved.
Motion by trustee Ross Mark, second.
Second.
Second by trustee Bone. Can we please have the vote, call for vote, Madam Secretary?
Trustee Bone.
Yes.
Trustee Dobski.
Yes.
Trustee Donahue.
Yes.
Trustee Jones.
Yes.
Trustee Lauterback, yes. Trustee Navarro.
Yes.
Trustee Ross Mark.
Yes.
Trustee Turner.
Yes.
As I mentioned, we will move into executive session at 11:10. You all have been provided a different Zoom link for addition for executive session. The board will move back into public session solely for the purpose of adjournment. With that, we conclude the quarterly meeting of the Board of Trustees, and we'll resume at 11:10 for executive session. Chairperson.